Call the meeting to order. Here.
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 Thank you. I see LakeCam is here, recording the meeting. Is anyone else recording the meeting? Okay, thank you. We're going to say the pleasure of allegiance, please join me. Hi, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do you want to mask, please?
Through the chair, I do want to, just to highlight, this is not an open discussion of whether to agree or disagree, but the Commissioner and DESI has required, effective immediately, and this was announced earlier today, in any school buildings, masks are required. So if you have a mask, we ask you politely to put it on. If you don't have a mask, unfortunately, we'll have to have you to excuse you to the meeting to either go grab a mask or what have you. It is not the position of this committee or the superintendent. This is coming from the state level, so we ask you just to oblige us with that and respect those conveniences. So if you want us to stay in the meeting, we have to ask you to put a mask on. Hmm? Then...
Oh, you're, she's exempt? Do you have, okay. Well, I see a couple other people who don't have. You don't have one.
Sure, we can find a couple.
If you take, if you allow me just to get up one second to the main office.
I would prefer you do that rather than have people leave.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
That back door is open.
So is that just two folks that need one? Three?
Thanks, Renee.
Thank you.
Mrs. Fox, my recommendation would be to continue with the meeting as...
Agreed, agreed. We just, I asked Mr. Owen to make that announcement. Again, this is coming from the state. This is not coming from us. It is a reflection of us. It's a reflection of what is now guidelines, policy at the state level. So thank you for that.
And Mrs. Fox, if I may, just to add to that, that correspondence and when it became official with the document that I received at 3:45 this afternoon.
Correct.
Otherwise, we would have had a plan we had been strongly recommending up to this point. Obviously, the edict is moving forward. We moved it to here, a little better air quality. We'll be back into, hopefully, the high school, back for our next meeting in September. We also wasn't sure what the turnout would be in relation to the opening of schools, so we moved to here, too. But we should be able to go back in the high school library for our next session.
Right. We were rather warm last time. Let's go on to the, oh, public participation. I have an important announcement to make. Bob Clark, it's your birthday. And we are grateful for you. How many years of service?
I'm not sure.
Twenty-something?
I'm not sure.
Many, 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 many years. He is our veteran school committee member and a dedicated school committee member. So with that, I'd like to say happy birthday!
Happy birthday. You know, being 35 isn't that bad, really.
I know. I don't have a problem with it. Is there anyone else here for public participation? Thank you. I would ask that you keep your remarks both civil and brief, if you don't mind. We unfortunately had a little bit of disrespect occur during our last meeting, and we want to avoid that. We are the example for our children. We should be setting that every way we do. Thank you. Yes, should be, if you're near it.
Yep. Is that better?
That's better. Thank you.
I just want to...
I'm sorry. Could you give us your name and town?
Yes, ma'am. Matt Allen from Freetown.
Yes.
Just really quickly, just so I know that obviously the argument over the discussion about masking children is over, and I want to thank you all for listening to us last time around and making what I consider to be the proper decision. And so just wanted to say this, just as a way to get it off not only my chest, but also make it known to the public and whoever might be watching. And I know, Ms. Fox, you work for the governor, so perhaps maybe you can send this message to him as well. I think that the process that was laid out, what happened for this decision, was reprehensible. I think the governor led us all along, saying that he believed that this would be locally mandated, locally controlled. And I think that, no matter what you believe on it, we as American citizens did our duty. We came to you, the board that was elected to represent us, made an argument. You agreed to it. The superintendent agreed to it. Everybody here in this room that voted that day agreed to accept that recommendation. The governor then pulled the rug out from underneath us with the commissioner. And now it's taken away what American citizens went to their locally elected officials and had them, through the correct process, had swept out from underneath them. And whether you agree with the end result or not, it's kind of irrelevant. I think the process is reprehensible. And I think that as a board, I would implore you all to use whatever sort of bully pulpit or sway you have with the Commissioner's office to let them know that you're upset, if you are. I think you are all elected. You work really hard. You don't have to be here. This is a pain in the neck for you. People voted for you to make these decisions, and it was taken away from you. And I find that to be abhorrent to the American way of life. I find that to be abhorrent to my, our system of government. If I went to that meeting and you all disagreed with me and voted against me, I wouldn't be here right now. Because that's the end of that. I made the case, lost. You win some, you lose some. But when you win one, and it's taken from you in a last-minute Friday night before a big storm media dump, that to me is offensive to me as a citizen, as a voter, as a taxpayer. And I've let the governor know this, to the extent he cares, I don't know. But maybe he'll see this, and maybe the Commissioner will see this. And I would also recommend that moving forward with, after reading the Commissioner's pronouncement, that this board do everything that you can in order to implement this process in as liberal a fashion as possible. Lots of mask breaks, lots of wide berth when it comes to implementation and enforcement of this. And also, I would recommend that we do not accept any policy that delineates between vaccinated and unvaccinated when it comes to masking. We're going to have the highest, the most at-risk young people who are eligible for vaccination to be unmasked, but the youngest child, like my eight-year-old, who's at the lowest risk of anything at all, if he even gets symptoms, is going to have to wear a mask all day long? That's absurd. It's absurd, and it's unfair, and it's wrong. And it's not backed by science. And so I would suggest, I would ask that we fight against those policies. If there's one to be implemented, it should be implemented for everybody. And to push back against this as much as you can, to the extent that you can, as your elected officials. But I do find that the governor pulling the rug out from people and telling somebody something for weeks, for weeks, and then pulling it out is just unforgivable. It's not the way we do things in this country. It shouldn't be. We should expect the truth from our leaders. If he didn't agree with it and wanted to have a mask mandate, he should have said so.
Okay. And I thank you for your, I really do. And I appreciated them last time as well. I really do. Thank you so much. Anyone else for public participation? Again, we need masks in here. There is a mandate. If you don't mind, state your name and town.
Yep, Carrie Polia Logos, Lakeville. I 100% agree with the gentleman over here. And I especially just want to say that when Massachusetts reaches its 80% vaccination rate for our kids, which it really isn't affecting everything that he said, that when you go for the children that cannot have or have a religious exemption or whatnot, you know, the children that cannot take this vaccine in our community, our small community compared to Lawrence and all these other Boston school systems, all this, you know, where there's like thousands and thousands of children. We have a small school district. Our children are going to be singled out, or the children who are not vaccinated and cannot take this shot, they're going to be singled out, sitting there with their masks, like this is a reward thing now? You got your vaccination, you can take your masks down. But the kids that can't have it, I have a son that has a life-threatening death-allergic reaction. He cannot have that vaccine. He will not have that vaccine. My son can die. So he's going to sit there in his little classroom with everybody, and he's going to be the one, most likely, sitting there with the mask on, and he has asthma, and that's okay? I find it disgusting, and I'm very, very frustrated with it. And it's not a one-size-fits-all. They went around, they changed things, and now our children that cannot be vaccinated, vaccinated, or, you know, because of their religious beliefs and whatnot, now they're the ones that are going to suffer here.
Actually, you're raising a good point, and one that we brought up with the superintendent last time before he met with his administrative team. I think we all share a lot of those same concerns, that we don't want any child singled out, and it's tough. It is very tough. So I appreciate your input.
What is the plan in our school system for the kids that cannot have that mask on, that they have anxiety, that they have severe anaphylactic shock, that they can't, you know, what is your plan? Like, what is going to happen to my child?
Yeah.
I really, you know, this is a very sensitive topic. My son cannot have that vaccine. He will die. So he's going to be persecuted in school by some, maybe possible, some of our staff, some of our other children, some of the parents that get wind, oh, you know, whatever. You know, it's just, I feel like it's just not right. We're a smaller school district. We're not Lawrence. We're not Everett. We're not these other huge schools. We're not Brockton High. We're not, you know, like, how are you going to protect my child? You know, like, this is a serious thing.
It is.
It really is.
It really is.
To all of you on the school board. It's devastating.
Yes.
You know, if you want, I mean, the decision's been made by the Commissioner, whatever his name is, Riley.
I would like the superintendent to...
You know, I mean...
Let's distinguish between the mask policy, which is a requirement now.
It is.
There are exemptions for children. When we get to that stage where there are no longer masks, those students will not, there are exemptions medically and behaviorally that will address and permit.
And religiously.
And permit children who are not vaccinated to continue to remain in school, not just here in Freetown, Lakeville, but also, and it is built into the detail behind what the Commissioner shared. I'll be sharing that in the superintendent's corner. I'm jumping a little bit ahead, and you'll get the whole document if you haven't seen it publicly. But it does, in fact, address and permit those students and children to remain in the school setting.
Right. They stay in. But all the other kids that had the vaccine, they don't have to wear their mask. So then there's the kids that cannot, or their religious beliefs, they have to wear the mask. So yes, they will be 100% singled out in our school system. So that's just a point. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes. Do you have a mask?
Sorry, I have an exemption.
You have an exemption as well?
Heather Wedge, from Lakeville. I just want to point out, Commissioner Riley, he has a bachelor's degree in philosophy, a master's degree in counseling, a master's degree in school administration, planning, and social policy. I don't see MD there. Why is this man mandating our children to wear an emergency-use authorized medical device? It's not even fully approved by the FDA. It has literally been said by the FDA that it's under EUA to cover COVID, to keep people from getting it. If you look at the side of the box, that, you guys are all wearing the same mask. What does it say on the side? It does not protect from COVID. So why are we playing this game? Can you guys please honestly explain to me why a man that doesn't have MD after his name is telling you guys what to do, our elected officials?
It goes to the Commissioner to make that decision, that call from the governor's directive. I don't have any...
So the Commissioner does have legal authority to impose, based on the statutory law, as it relates to safety and health in addition to time on learning. So he's fully within, I'm not going to debate the credentials, but I'm just responding to the fact that the Commissioner's authority, in fact, given to him by the Board of Education and voted on, does in fact give him the authorization to impose this in addition to other items.
Right. And the governor doesn't have an MD either. I think they rely on...
Right.
...their experts to make these decisions. And I think part of it was just what we see and we experienced two weeks ago in this very area, was that it was very difficult for the local people, because it's partisan. It just is. People have, you always say this all the time, it's 50-50. You're going to have 50% of the people who agree and 50% who don't. It's a very sensitive, highly emotional topic.
Mrs. Fox, if I may, just in, he's relying on...
Experts.
Expert medical professionals in making the recommendation. Again, I'm not here to challenge or debate the science of it, as I do. If you looked at my degrees, I'm making decisions based on education, and it's a realm of responsibilities, and you hope that those individuals rely on experts and professionals to do so. I can assure you that I wish I had the contrare of team that he has at his disposal in relation to this. And probably, in all honesty, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts may have the most talented medical team in place in the country as it relates to people he relied on prior to making it. And he did attempt to hold off on making this decision as long as he felt, as long as he possibly thought so. So again, I'm not trying to dissuade or persuade, and certainly public input is simply that, where you're permitted to do that.
That's right.
But I just wanted to respond to the fact that he didn't make that decision. Certainly, one, he has the authority, and two, he didn't do it in isolation without getting counsel. Thank you.
I just want to point out two other things, though. Number one, he didn't, he asked for the authority. He said, "Grant me the authority." Like, this guy on a power trip? Seriously? Like, I don't know if any of you guys know him, but the way that this was done, it really seems like he's on a power trip. I am the boss. I am the Commissioner. You know, King Baker just knighted me, and that's exactly what I feel like. And who is the board? How do we get the board out? They're not our elected officials, so they're not doing what we want them to do. So how do we get rid of them? Can you help us with that?
I think that there are valid points to do that. I don't think many of us will disagree with that. I think at this point, those very valid comments need to go to the state level. Right. So you have the list of those that are on the Board of Education. You know, I have similar concerns in that aspect of it. At this point, you know, this is where the voice from a parent perspective or a student perspective, you need to go to the state level. Your state rep, the governor, the Commissioner, the Board of Directors at the DESI level, that's where they need to hear that feedback.
Okay. The problem is DESI? They don't go to their office, and they will not listen to us. They mute us. That's why they're doing all of their meetings on Zoom. They mute us. They're not listening. So we need to know how to go against them, and that's what I'm asking you.
You make a good point. The state reps are a really good...
No, they're not. I sat for 15 and a half hours to testify in front of the representatives. And I listened to so many parents talk about vaccine reactions that their children had, and those representatives literally laughed and smiled and tweeted about how great their meeting was going. So right now, we do not have people representing us. And that's why I'm asking, can you guys please point us in the direction and help us?
I would just... I wish I had the crystal ball or the magic wand to sit there and say, "This is what you need to do." We've done the same thing as parents, gone to the state level and given our opinion. You have to continue that process, no matter, as frustrating as it is and feels like you're beating your head against the wall, that's the direction at this point, right? There's nothing that this board can do. We can express our opinions as parents or individual members, but there's no other advice that I can give you, and we've been given all along, the state is where we need to give this opinion as far as where the responsibility, as far as masks or vaccines.
Mrs. Barron?
Heather, have you contacted the Commissioner's office?
I have.
Recently, because I contacted the Commissioner's office the day before yesterday. I left a message, a pretty lengthy message.
Okay.
She called me back. The secretary or administrative assistant called me back yesterday morning, 8:30 yesterday morning. So I would assume as soon as she got in, she checked all of her messages. I had a lengthy conversation. I would suggest that you do that. Same with Representative Oral.
Yeah.
Norm, I'm sure will listen to, I'm positive he will listen to you. Matt and Carrie and Heather, you bring up excellent, excellent points. But you need to, and I've said this in an email, I think, to you. This committee right here, as a committee, we can't do much. As individuals, we can call, too. And I think that's what some of us are doing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public participation? Well, thank you all. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Sorry, I'm late. This is my son at the high school.
I'm sorry. Do you have a mask?
I don't, but I also have the law right here that says that I don't need one because it inhibits my breathing.
Okay.
So, thank you. So, you know, our entire school is being inhibited for their breathing right now. When our kids come back, their breathing is going to be bothersome by these masks that we're mandating. And I want to just say that I have noticed a difference in my children when they wear their masks. I see that they're not on top of the things that, like, they're just not responding to me the same way that they used to. They're not as quick as they used to be. They don't have as much of an enthusiasm. I'm finding that they're very tired. And I know when I put a mask on, because I tried it in the beginning last year, and I couldn't. I couldn't breathe, and I was having trouble with headaches and dizziness and nauseousness. I don't know what it was, if it was something in the mask that on the side of my box says that it will not protect me from COVID-19 or any other germs or any other viruses, right on the box, right on these blue mask box. And these cloth ones, they're not helping at all. They're actually just creating more problems. So I agree with Heather and probably a couple of the other ones that got up. We want you guys to help us figure out who we're supposed to go to. We want you to back us up, because you're supposed to be here for our kids and their learning. And DESI, again, is supposed to be there for creating a credible learning environment for them to be able to go on and be successful people. And if we're inhibiting their brains by not giving them their oxygen, what are we doing? We have to stop doing that, and you guys got to help us get to that point, because we don't feel like we have any backing from you guys. A couple of you, we do. But a lot of you, we don't feel like that, you know? I apologize, but that's just my personal opinions. We would like to get to know you guys better, to find out if you have children in the school systems, or are your grandkids here now, you know? To find out really what you really think about the whole thing, you know, your personal opinions on it, because we want to know who's on our side and who's going to help. Maybe we could do a coffee hour with all of you or something, you know, and really get to talk about this stuff, you know? I'm going to homeschool one child, but the other one's a senior. He doesn't want to leave school, you know? This is his big year. You know, he's been here all four years. He wants to stay. I want him to stay. I just don't want him to ruin his brain.
Thank you. Mr. Owen?
To answer your question, I do have two kids in the district for that. One's at the high school and one's in the middle school. And, you know, I did have the opportunity as a school committee member to walk through the schools last year, both before getting our kids back into the district and afterwards. And I think the superintendent and the administration did a fantastic job, and much better than any other district around us are getting our kids back to school in that, right? It was very frowned upon, as I've said, upon as a 50-50 pandemic. Half the group did not like it. But I will tell you, the difference was night and day when the kids were back in the school. Did they light the mask, or I'll call them chin straps while they're in there? No. But they much prefer to be in the schools to do that.
We agree.
So it is our job to provide an environment that gets them back into the schools themselves. And there are some decisions that are not going to be liked upon, liked very much. There are some decisions that we don't like as state mandates come down on them, and unfortunately, this is one of them, okay? I individually, I think this should have been down to a parental decision in that particular case.
We agree.
But even though I don't like the decision, I have to respect that it comes from a legal authority to implement that aspect of it, all right? So our job is to, is what we told you, here's how, what you can do to change the mind, but it's at the state level in that particular case, all right? But I will tell you, my kids are all over the place. And the feedback, even though I, as a parent, want the decision about what we do for our children, the feedback is these kids will do anything just to get back into schools.
Of course. They don't know what they're doing.
In a normal environment, right, in that particular case.
This is not normal.
I see valid points across the board here, right? And they're all valid points. And no one is more of an expert about my children than myself and my wife.
That's right.
It is what it is, a mask mandate. We're going to go forward with that. I have a huge concern about the policy that they're right now going with, and I'm going to try and, as a parent, argue that that needs to be changed for August, October 1st. As somebody brought it up, you're going to have kids, for whatever reason, that don't fall under the exception that are not getting vaccinated. What is being proposed now, and I'm sure will be worked through, we're modernizing the Scarlet Letter.
What does that mean?
Okay?
Layman's terms for me, please.
Great book. Read upon it. Do that, okay? You're basically putting masks on kids that are not vaccinated, and you are highlighting to that point. And I would go much to say that we are crossing that threshold of a HIPAA violation.
Sure.
That is my personal opinion of it. But as a member of this committee, our objective is to get these kids back to school in the best way that we know how. And of the 2,800 kids, they're going to fall into different buckets, whether they have compromised immune system, whether they have learning deficiencies, they need extra services, or they could be the most quote-unquote "normal" person. Let's face it, they're not normal. They're teenagers and young kids. But we need to do our best to do that. And my objective work with this committee is how do we get 2,800 kids back into the school on September 8th , where we can start this learning process?
I would like to give you a suggestion. Stop having vaccination clinics here, because when you bring that into an area, it can spread to others. It's not, whatever they call it. What it's doing is it is actually transmitting from the vaccinated to the non-vaccinated, and then the people that are getting vaccinated are getting this quote-unquote "Delta variant." They can't tell you that it really is a Delta variant. They can't tell you what strain it is.
Sorry, I do have to stop. I don't, that's factual.
Oh, really?
I will tell, it is not factual.
It is.
And I'm not an MD, right? But I will tell you, is I would not propose this district not providing an opportunity for anyone to get vaccinated. There are people in our district that don't have the means to get to that.
And they want...
So if a parent wants to choose to do that, we will provide them the opportunity.
Don't bring it into our school, where unvaccinated kids are coming into, and now it's going to spread to us anyway.
I'm going to have to move on to the next person unless you have one more point.
Yes, I do.
Okay.
The VAERS report. Do you guys know what that is?
What report?
It's the Vaccination Adverse Reaction Report.
Okay.
There's about maybe 1% to 6% that actually gets sent to the VAERS, notified to VAERS. Right now, as of August 13th, we have had, I'm sorry, 13,608 vaccination-reported deaths from COVID. The total reported deaths is over 21,000, almost 22,000 right now for the year, since the beginning of the year till August 13th. And we've had 540,000 post-COVID vaccinations reported, hospitalizations. So...
I hear you, and I will say this about anything. Data is great, because you can always present the data that makes your point of view great. And I'm not here to disagree or anything, but you ask for advice, here's what I can tell you. There is an avenue for a medical exemption. If there's a concern for your children as far as a medical, have a conversation with your primary care, your provider, and get that medical exemption.
They're afraid to put their names on it.
You have an opportunity to do that.
The doctors are afraid to put their names on anything, to be ousted by the insurance companies and other people.
What else would you like us to do?
Well, I just gave you a suggestion.
I've given you opportunities in that particular case.
I just gave you a suggestion to not bring COVID into our freaking schools. I mean...
Okay. Thank you.
You know, come on.
We'll take the next person.
So do I got to get some information to you guys on that, on the transmission, and the fact that they found over 250% increase of COVID in people's noses from the vaccinated ones?
Mrs. Fox, I would just add, if any information needs to be shared by any community member, they simply can do it through my office, and I'll ensure that you get that information.
Go right through the superintendent.
Absolutely.
And then is it going to be just dismissed like it's being now? And then is it going to be just dismissed like it's being now?
You know, again, we're, um, I think Mr. Owen said it clearly.
I appreciate your time, Mr. Owen, and all of you. I really do. But we got to do something. We got to stop doing things that are causing problems.
Well, that is certainly not our intention. And as Mr. Owen said, we, we did do, I think, I credit the administration, a phenomenal job last year under very difficult circumstances. And the kids were happy, and there was no in-school transmission because of everything we did. Any transmission was in the community.
Yeah.
And then we traced it, and we monitored, and we ported out weekly. I, I don't know of any other district that did the job we did with so few cases.
And we appreciate you guys getting them back.
Well, the reason for that is because we worked together to make it happen.
Mm-huh.
And that's what we want to continue to do. We are operating under the guidance that came down from the state level. We encourage you to reach out as well as we are already doing independently. But as a committee, that's all we can do is reach out. We reach out as individuals.
Well, actually, as a committee, we could actually teach the kids about boosting their immunity with vitamin D and vitamin C and zinc and getting out in the sun instead of putting the time and effort and money into doing tests every three minutes. I'm just giving you suggestions. You said, "What can we do?"
Yeah.
I'm just giving you suggestions. You asked, "What can we do?" That's one of them.
Mrs. Bear has a comment.
Go ahead.
I'm deeply disappointed in what the commissioner did also in changing. Last year, the local school districts were pretty much in charge of their own decisions on what was happening. He did an outstanding job. I don't know why he backtracked last week. None of us except, accepted that. But I have to say, and I'll say it over and over, I'll meet with you, I'll meet with anyone. This is not the end. We are losing local control right now.
Right. Our freedoms are gone.
We are, we have all being painted with the same, every district is being painted with the same paintbrush, whether you're in a city, whether you're a gateway city, whether you're a suburb or you're rural. We need, we need parents to help us with this.
We try. You know what? We had probably 10 more people to come. They all got disgusted.
This is not, this is not a one-night deal.
Right. They all got disgusted.
This is going to be months.
You know why they got disgusted? Because they felt like they would be dismissed the way I saw it. I didn't feel it with the two of you, right? Some of you, I, I didn't feel it with. Some of you, I did. And, um, that's why people don't come and talk, because they just feel not heard and, and dismissed.
Mrs. Fox, I know there's some, potentially other items. I, in, in some of my comments, I think I'll also address some of the concerns that she's raising to others when I speak to kind of some of the things we're doing to address them as well, and, and your role as well. So, thank you.
Okay, uh, somebody else who really would like to try to limit things to three minutes? Yes, ma'am?
Oops, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I was just calling up the next person.
I'm Christina Barefoot. I'm from Lakeville. And I was going to, um, talk a little bit about masks and the injuries that have happened in the communities and local communities, but it sounds like you guys really already understand that.
Could I be come closer to the microphone?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry.
Thank you, sorry.
Is that good? That's good?
Yeah, thank you.
So I actually, people are asking, "How can you help?" And so I hope that this is a way that you guys can help because there was a lot of research was done on this and some collaboration. So let's give it a shot and see what happens. And it looks like a lot of papers, but I can't read, so I had to make it really big. So after researching the laws around, um, the Monday Board Meeting of Education with a few of my associates in my circle, it was made clear that the commissioner has no power to mandate an untested emergency medical device on the children in Massachusetts. Yeah, he doesn't. For quite a few reasons, and I'll go over them. The commissioner can't mandate, uh, can't make mandates in laws. He can only follow those put in place by our legislators. Uh, the Board of Education can't make changes to their policies independently. They're out of their scope of practice and job role. And the commissioner did point out in yesterday's meeting that they gave themselves the ability to make such decisions when amending the student's learning time policy. But, you know, that doesn't give them the power to do it. It has to come from legislation, which is basically our voices, the people. Their unlawful addition to the policy, which ultimately void, which is ultimately void, included the need for extingent circumstances to exist. We are not in an emergency. There is zero deaths of children in Massachusetts from COVID. There is zero to four cases of death overall with COVID per day in our state. And the sole reason expressed by the commissioner was an increase in cases. But given the history of PCR tests, its loss of emergency use, but that medical facilities are still using them, we really have no true validated number of the increase in cases. So it's a questionable number. So it's very thin ice. There's not a lot to determine that there were any circumstances. A reasonable person, oh, I apologize. All right, so a questionable number of increase in cases would not lead a reasonable person to agree that there are extingent circumstances. Regardless, the board did not, and he, the board did not, and he did not have the power to make medical decisions for the children in Massachusetts. We never gave him that power, nor did our legislators. Board of Education member West stated in the meeting, "He was reluctantly convinced that extingent circumstances existed," and he pointed out quite a few other displeasures with the situation and the mandate as it was written. Brynneford said at the meeting, "Tying masking to vaccination rates is a really poor policy, especially with no exit strategy." He's corrected, "It's extremely poor policy, especially since we heard Education Board member Kaiser reinforce the importance of vaccinations to create incentives for all communities to get students and staff vaccinated, and that hopefully today's action will help us get to the goal of 80% vaccinated." Polito and Pyri's also stated the same in two news articles last week. Nothing about how great masks are and work, nothing about the safety, just the need to use them in coercive, as a coercive device to get vaccination rates up. They are using the vaccine as the carrot to remove the mask, which is fully inappropriate for our children. What they fail to tell you is the Pfizer vaccine is actually not FDA-approved. It remains under E, um, emergency use. Pfizer's sister product, Carminati, and I don't know if I'm pronouncing that right because nobody's actually said it out loud yet, that is not yet in circulation, was approved for use. So children who are being coerced to get the vaccine will be getting the Pfizer vaccine, which is still under emergency use authorization with no liability even in our vaccine injury court. Then, once the Carminati is out of production and ready for circulation, its newest printed insert states on page 14, section 8.4, "Safety for children under 16 years of age has not been established." So do you think parents are going to run and grab it and go get it? Do you think using a coercive device is safe for the children of Lakeville and Freetown? Safety for children 16 and 17-year-olds are based on adult studies, but these, children at these ages are growing. They have puberty. Those are issues in themselves, and they really can't be compared to adults. They just can't. Section 15, uh, page 15, section 13.1, "It has not been evaluated for the potential cause for cancer, genotoxicity, mutagenesis, or impairment of male fertility." This is why we don't give unqualified education commissioners and boards of education the right to make any mandates regarding health and safety decisions for us children, especially with using the vaccine as an exit strategy for an untested, emergency-use medical device, the mask. Mandating masks will not increase vaccine uptake. Mandating for coercion will only create a larger barrier. Yesterday's meeting and decision was illegal. It was made by unqualified people without reasonable cause and actually appeared to be a means to cloud and interfere in exactly what we're here to do today. On a final note, given all of the above information, I'm here to ask that you reverse the decision that Mr. Medias announced today, say no to the extra COVID reimbursement if we comply with this unlawful mandate, and request instead that you use your doctrine of the lesser legislative powers against the lawless mandate of our education commissioner. I would like to request instead that we keep what was discussed last meeting in place until we very quickly set up a subcommittee, including parents who have both opinions, and we ask, uh, and we work as a community together to make better solutions that suit all of us, meet all of our safety goals and quell concerns of harm for all of the children. And I think it's a very reasonable request. Another thing, and for students who do wear masks, because there will be some that do, and there will be some who have exemptions, like my son, that don't, and there'll be some who they don't have to because if they can't breathe, they can remove it. But the really most important thing, that there needs to be teaching done to prevent contamination and spread, something that these children have not been taught or following, and that is putting everybody at higher risk for multiple different infections. So, you know, in the medical field, you're, you're trained yearly on how to don, doff, remove, where to put it. You can't reuse it. So we're actually making a big spreading vector for all kinds of things when we, when we use the masks. So I just want to say on the last note, um, to follow the, that, uh, the lawless, unsafe mandate is not only dangerous and irresponsible, but it puts the town at risk, which none of us needs. Thank God we live in a democracy. We voted all of you in so that you can represent us when a situation exactly like this arises. This is not a black and white issue. It requires extensive discussions before any final decisions can be made. And that's it.
Thank you.
I, I thank you for your feedback. I do appreciate it. Um, I, I, not that I don't disagree with your recommendation. Um, and I'm sure I'm not going to offend anybody up here, but no one has the legal background to be able to either agree or disagree with you on this side of the aisle here, okay? So I, I think what we typically would do in this manner, we would have the superintendent get a legal opinion from the, the, our lawyer. We could take that next step in that particular case.
I have that.
And move forward.
Okay.
I have that.
So, uh, in, but as I said, as a state mandate, we have to follow that particular case. That's what we're going to do in this particular, and we'll follow up on the next steps there.
Okay, we will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Again, these have been going on a little bit long, and we do have a, a big agenda. We really recognize the importance of this. Thank you.
Made a lot of the good points, um...
Sorry, can you provide your name and, you know, name and town?
Christina, and, from Freetown.
Thank you.
Um, my daughter cannot wear a mask, so I will try to get a, um, exemption, even though our pediatrician dislikes me very much.
Can you get a little closer to the mic, too? Sorry.
Um, will you, if we cannot get an exemption and she does have to come to school wearing a mask, where I don't think she can, um, will you be offering TECA or an online, um, schooling?
So, so the requirement for this year does not permit hybrid and/or remote instruction as part of structured learning time. So unlike last year where there was that opportunity, in-person instruction is the requirement for instruction for this year at this time.
And is there any way...
TECA is available for home-school parents who, who choose to do that. It is a, but it will not be through the district, um, sponsored.
So, useless. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And just to be clear, this is, that's not just a COVID-19. If your son or daughter comes down with mono or any of that, right? So I just want to make sure that this is not a, a typical thing related to what we're experiencing right now. If you had an extended illness, you know, the district wouldn't be providing remote learning in that particular case. So, and as parents, we have to address that on any type of illness that comes up, right? So, um, but if you choose you want to homeschool, there are options. And then as a superintendent, there's TECA, but it's not provided as part of the district options.
I'd be, I'd be certainly be welcome and open to any parent reaching out to me.
Right.
But I can help facilitate the application process and what it entails.
Right, right. Thank you. Anyone else? Sure.
Can they still, um, come for prom and walk the stage and things like that?
So, so there are certain requirements and certain participation participants are permitted. I'd have to go into some detail. Pat Cluminsky oversees that, but my understanding is they are not permitted to participate in those activities.
Oh, another punishment.
Again, not, again, a requirement, but we, I can give more detail to any parent that would like that information before they make a decision as it relates to that.
Anyone else? Well, thank you all for your input. Stay tuned. Uh, minutes. We're going to move on to the minutes of June 16. We're looking for...
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for June 16.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Laura abstains. And Jen, okay.
I'll also make a motion to accept the minutes of the executive session for June 16.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Laura abstains.
I'll also make a motion to accept the minutes on August 11th.
We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions on the, yes, I'm sorry. Mr. Sylvia abstains. And, yeah, the award winner. Thank you. All right. We have no presentation. I thought we did.
We've actually incorporated into some new business items as it relates to some of our programming things. So we'll be addressing some of those items that were initially presented.
All right.
I hope that there is a thought, and we missed it last year, that, that we will be bringing back the high school representatives as part of the presentation for this year. Is that the plan?
Uh, we do. We do have them.
We do have that.
As part of that process, we typically don't do that until at least they return to school.
Right.
Not that I don't believe you, what's happening in the school, but I do think we get good insight, though.
We do. We do. Very good point.
I would agree. We can, we can attempt to do that. Even sometimes the first month is challenging, but we are meeting September 22nd. I'll work with Mr. Zert about, um, making sure we have representation.
Excellent. Okay. Ms. Lee, budget?
Yes. Uh, for FY '21, included in your packet is the overview, year-to-date, um, budget versus actual report, and estimated excess and deficiency balance. On a year-to-date basis, we have an estimated addition of $445,000 to E and D, which would leave us at approximately $2,031,000 of projected E and D. Um, in accordance with, uh, 603 CMR, school districts may retain about 5% of its proposed budget, uh, leaving us with an allowable cap of $2,540,000. Although we have $700,000 of reimbursement requests with Plymouth County that have not yet been paid, we will not take a reduction to our E and D for these, since the advisory memo that was published by the Massachusetts Department of Local Service officials states that unpaid CARES Act fund reimbursements are excluded from the calculation that would typically have reduced our E and D. Our E and D estimate is subject to final certification, which we expect will be submitted, uh, to the Department of Revenue no later than October 31st.
And we're gonna, what about '22? We're gonna do later?
And we're going, no, we can go right to '22 as well.
Okay, let's do it.
So FY '21, now it's FY '22, which is, uh, old business B.
For FY '22, the year-to-date budget versus actual results are presented, as well as an updated assessment sheet. The assessment sheet represents changes to the Chapter 71 transportation estimate, which is still subject to change and typically, uh, can change all the way, um, until the end of the year through June. Our Chapter 70 assessment initially planned held true in the final governor's budget of $11,183,623. Therefore, no adjustment was needed. These estimates are normally, uh, again, the Chapter 71 can be redo, um, revised as late as June in each fiscal year. That's for the transportation piece. One key notable item is that the governor's official budget that was passed, um, included the elimination of utilizing SR2 to fund the reduction of the town's local minimum contribution. As a result, at either this school committee meeting or the next meeting, I would like to present a vote to request unwinding the SR2 revenue source from the assessment sheet, as well as a reduction of the cost from the operating fund. The SR2 costs would, would then be managed as normal through a special revenue federal grant fund. And I can provide some additional details, um, in item 8A in the agenda.
Okay, including the unwinding piece? Good, okay. Um, new business that falls on you?
Yeah. Fox, thank you. So just a couple of, of quick items, and then I'll certainly address the largest item in relation to the opening of schools. I did provide you some class size, um, updates in relation to enrollment. Does, does it change in day-to-day? Please understand that. We're two weeks out. Um, I think probably of the most significance, we're seeing about 20 more students than last year currently enrolled for the start of the school year. Eight more students at Eswamset projected, 18 at Freetown Elementary School, seven at the intermediate school, um, nine more students at the middle school. And, uh, our enrollment is down, really the result of a large, uh, high school, senior class for the most part. Um, keeping track, working with the elementary principals, both at Eswamset and Freetown Elementary School in relation to a couple of class numbers in those sections. And I've spoken to a couple of school board members, uh, that are sensitive to that, but we do feel confidently that the sections are, are addressing those and will continue to monitor them moving forward. I think staffing's appropriate. Uh, in addition, we posted bus routes yesterday, um, so on the website, and principals will be sending out some documentation in relation to a... sending out some documentation in relation to a variety of things. So those are just kind of some ticket items that I mean, come back to, but I know the vast majority of conversation kind of led into much of what public participation brought tonight, which is the fact that DESI, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and the Department of Public Health really issued two joint statements on a safer return to school in Massachusetts on July 30th and 13th. I referenced it at the last meeting. I received the implementation of the mask requirement this afternoon at 3:45 from the commissioner's office and forwarded it to the school board, subsequently did a one-call, and we'll send out a superintendent's corner tomorrow with more detail and have the document attached, which is a two-page document. The mask requirements is an exercise of the board's responsibility to ensure students attend school in a safe environment, and they've exercised that authority to do so. I have spoken to legal, not only our legal counsel, but legal counsel for all of the superintendents throughout the state, and it's supportive of his authority to in fact impose this. And in fact, the really only decision that the school committee needs to be aware is to be sure that we implement this moving forward. So it is my strong recommendation, no action needs to be taken, but the implementation of this requirement is necessary in my role as superintendent, and that has nothing to do with my personal opinion. I just think it's important to note, the school board's role and responsibility is to implement those policies and procedures and requirements as it relates to their role as school board members, not their individual opinions, but their collective responsibility to bring back our kids to in-person instruction safely. So, and that's certainly my role as superintendent as well. So I'm not in a position here in front of the microphone to talk to you about my two boys who are in college and what their role and responsibility is, but rather, what is my role and responsibility as superintendent to protect our 2,800 students that are returning and those 400 employees? Some highlights of the new directive, obviously, schools are required for in-person full-time five days a week, no remote options. I've kind of referenced that. Masks are required of all students and staff, pre-k 12 while indoors until October 1st, and there'll be more detail in the superintendent's corner speaking to kind of that rollout plan. All staff and students are required to wear a mask while in a van or a bus, and in health office, that was the previous document, but now we're indoors for all activities. And moving forward from this point on, any indoor activity will require that. There are some exemptions made, and we've kind of referenced them from earlier. No specific distance requirements are in place at this point in school. Students may eat snacks and lunch without masks and without extra distancing. We will be using the cafeteria in all our classrooms. We are excited about some normalcy being brought back to the start of the school year that was not in place when we had those kids back in the springtime fully. I do appreciate the committee, and I do agree. I think as a district, we made a valiant effort to bring our kids back in person, and I think we continue to do so. Continued good hygiene, staying home when not feeling well, some general things that are going to come out, and nurses will be sharing some informations. So we've got some protocols in place. We have some new protocols and testing in place that I'm excited about in relation to making sure our kids and staff members are able to stay in school safely. As I said, I'll be sending out a superintendent's corner. I did the one-call this afternoon. You would have received that one-call from me sooner if the information had been shared with me sooner. I literally did it within 15 minutes of my office upon receipt, so the school community could be aware of the new implementation plan for opening day, which is two weeks away. One week away for our staff, but two weeks away for students. We'll continue to adhere our efforts to provide a safe environment. The second vaccination clinic opportunity, we had 30 participants. We'll be offering that again. Once again, it's simply an opportunity on-site for those individuals who would like to take advantage of that. And I'll continue to provide that information from a communication perspective. It's very important to note that the commissioner's directive is to reach the threshold of 80% rate and for a change in the mandate after October 1st. I think that's going to be, continue to be looked at and researched, not only in these two communities, but throughout the state. We'll once again offer COVID testing. We're going to expand that testing to the test and stay, and there'll be more information for parents to be aware of in superintendent's corner tomorrow and in upcoming nurses' nooks as it relates to options for symptomatic individuals and asymptomatic close contacts. I'm very, very excited and pleased about this added program that we have added to keep, the added program, I'm sorry, that we've brought in in addition to the previous program we did last year with the By Next Now, because it allows individuals to stay in school, and really, that's really the motivation and goal behind that. I'm confident the plan is effective, it's fully supported, and I'm simply asking that all the school committee needs to do tonight is implement the requirements, and I've already started that piece as it relates to, I'll continue to meet with health officials, our school physician, and we'll continue to monitor the situation in both towns as we did last year and do what we think is the safest thing as it relates to calling on people. So again, I'm not here to editorialize or politicize the situation or speak to that, and I'm certainly not an expert as it relates, but as superintendent of schools, and the school board does need to implement this moving forward, we're prepared to do so. I've communicated that out. We have two weeks to prepare. In addition to a lot of other exciting things, we have our new staff coming onboard next week for new teacher or staff orientation on Monday and Tuesday. Dr. Koblinsky oversees that program. All the staff is coming back on Wednesday, September 1st and 2nd, and then our kids are coming back on September 8th, and we're real excited about that, and we do feel our schools are ready. Kara's going to reference some of the facilities, things that we've done, some of the other mitigation strategies that relate to ventilation and other things within our building that we think provides an even safer environment than we previously had. So I'd be happy just to answer board member-specific questions, the requirements I've shared with you as it relates to that piece, but again, within the scope and sequence of kind of where what we need to do, is we need to prepare safely for our kids to return to school, and we are doing so, and effective immediately at all of our schools, indoor activities will require masks for both adults and students with the consideration given to exemptions that are documented.
Right, thank you for that.
Be happy to answer any questions specifically regarding opening of school in general. I tried to highlight a couple of items that might have come up.
I will say, so class size, thanks for that update there, I know this is very fluid, and I am concerned of the, call it the bumpy case aspect of it, where we have higher numbers in kindergarten and lower numbers in follow-on grades. I know there are extra services at those grade levels, and you know, I certainly hope that the principals are looking at that. I am concerned about that age group because there was a period of time wherein it wasn't a normal educational experience in this group, and I think we're all aware just based upon hearing you over the last eight years. By the time they get to fourth grade, they have to have that good foundation, so I want to make sure that we are doing everything we can to give them that good foundation. I hope that we're doing a little bit extra to that. So I do want to pull out that 20 kids in kindergarten is a concern for me from that perspective. If I'm reading that right, at Freetown Elementary, so...
Correct.
Are we sending out the survey to parents about the By Next Testing as far as an opt-in? Or how is that working?
So the, so the two aspects, the testing we did last year, By Next Now, is for those asymptomatic individuals who are, who come down to the nurse and are feeling well and potentially can take the test prior to leaving. The additional test, test and stay, that protocol and those procedures and the ability to consent, because it is absolutely a parent's decision whether they want to provide that support, will actually be a link tomorrow in my superintendent's corner so they can do that right online, and there'll be some nurses follow-up on some of the detail behind what they can expect to see. But there'll be an online, it's the most efficient. You can do a paper, and we will accept that if necessary, but starting tomorrow, parents will have the ability, because we've already received approval for those programs, to sign up their children in the event that that's the case. And really, the motivation behind that is, has nothing to do with vaccines, it's simply allowing your children, child to stay in school who might potentially have been a close contact where in the past they simply were sent home. So parents will be provided that link tomorrow, and the nurses and the principals will be following, sending out additional information at the school level over the next couple of weeks, and certainly provide a parent an opportunity to engage.
Mr. Sylvia? Oh, I'm sorry, you have another question?
My last question here is, I agree with your point that we as a board need to, while keeping our personal opinions as part of what we want to decide, we do have to make a decision for 2,800 kids. I'm happy that we're getting them all back September 8th. I really have a strong concern about the next phase of this starting October 1st. We are a far better district based upon what we have, based upon the 80% rule, we're automatically excluding four of our five schools based upon the makeup of the age groups. So I'm asking you to advocate through your superintendent to how do we get the middle school or that sixth grade not counted in that mix there? Or a, probably a better thought process in this whole thing. It is a strong concern of mine of that scarlet letter approach, right? And it is a very big concern because we still have to protect our students against what was presented last night at the high school orientation, the anti-hazing and anti-bullying. There's going to be another phase to that. So I ask you, as we have to implement that, we need to advocate to make that clearer and make that not a point that we're putting it on these kids. So that's going to be a big thing, and I know a lot's going to change over the next six weeks, but that's a big concern. I'm happy that we're getting 2,800 kids back, don't get me wrong, but that is a big concern that we need to really take into consideration.
I think that's shared up here. We don't want to see that happen at all. And we talked about this two weeks ago, and we need to continue that discussion. Mr. Sylvia?
Yes, thank you. You know, given the scope of the body and what we can control changed and shifted dramatically this week, I like your focus on the idea that we're keeping kids in school. I do appreciate and thank you for the public comment, but given the focus that the emphasis now, for me at least, focuses on keeping in school. You said the expansion of testing, does that include the pool testing that we often read about?
So we are, of the three programs, we are only opting into the By Next Now and the Test and Stay. It does not include the, and just to Mr. Sylvia's point, just for the community here, this idea that we're going to test everybody randomly within a classroom. We have not, and I don't intend to at this point recommend that we engage in pool testing. The Test and Stay program has been approved, and we will implement that.
Just for clarification, on the Test and Stay program, I think I did read in advance of the mask mandate recently, it was applicable to kids wearing masks anyway at the suggestion of the commissioner.
That's correct. That's correct.
So you're only going to be able to participate and stay in school if you were wearing a mask.
So that already helps us with the situation in the Test and Stay, correct, for those individuals, yes.
With the idea of keeping kids in school.
Again, the motivating factor there, Mr. Sylvia is absolutely correct. So for those parents, we've had this conversation, you had a potential close, you had potential close contacts, those kids regardless of being asymptomatic were sent home and missed a large chunk of school time. We now have a mechanism, if parents choose to take advantage of that and consent, to allow the child to stay in school and be tested by the nurse in the health office within the school and remain in person instruction, and I think that's going to be, well, one, I think, I think if you look at some of the regulations, we'll take a look at that first month, I think it's going to be most helpful to keep kids back in school and involved in activities and the variety of things. It does include athletes and sports and so forth as well.
And just from my own head, as we speak about authority and who has the ability to make these decisions, the bus mandate was a federal mandate? Is that, can you explain?
Yes, yes. It was a federal public order. So even the Commonwealth of Massachusetts had no jurisdiction there. That came directly from federal, and that was, and that was previous when we were looking at potential option of masks. That requirement exists because of the federal requirement of being a public health order. Correct.
So even when that was, when the ability to entertain the mask concept, we were not going to be able to adjust the...
No leverage as it related to transportation, busing, and van, correct.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else? Questions? All right, we're going to move on to the summer program.
So I'm going to touch a point, I didn't ask the directors to both...
I thought she was going to be here.
They both provided, both Diane Sopega and Lisa Pacico gave me an overview, and they certainly could be available after specific questions. I'll try to give some highlights. We had an exciting summer. We had a, we had a very safe summer. We had a lot of activities, extended school year program. We'll give an update, Liz Curran will give an update within her report relation to special education services. Dr. Koblinsky, within her report, will speak to that program. We had a comprehensive and detailed academic support program for children to address some of the concerns that you've shared earlier in relation to gaps of the summer. Two programs that have been longstanding programs, very successful programs, again, once we had the ability to, and just to speak to the community. So if you recall in the spring, we were requiring masks. When they made that a flexible piece, we immediately made it optional in the summertime. So just to, to the spirit of this piece, this board supported that, and we safely were able to have programs and have it as an option. That no longer is the case as we move back into the fall, similar to spring. But we had campus programs, and I won't give a good to all the details, but we did have a successful campus program. We had strength and conditioning, we had tennis, we had track, we had volleyball, we had pool programs. We had 37 kids in strength and conditioning, 16 in tennis, 27 in track, 21 in volleyball, and certainly the use of the pool through Kids Cafe, close to 100 students, we had some rental, and we have some open piece. We obviously had the use of the facility here with the Pan Mask Challenge and some other recitals that we also held here at the middle school. So that's, generally speaking, campus programs, we'll, we are continuing to roll out fall programs as it relates to the requirements. We will now just adjust our COVID, we typically have just put COVID regulations, because if there's adjustment, that means we made it to an indoor activity, for example, masks will need to be worn. It's an outside activity, that won't be the case. As far as the Kids Cafe, very successful Kids Cafe summer program led by Ms. Pacico. The program ran for three sessions, June 21st through July 30th. We obviously had to make some significant changes, and there were districts and communities that chose to not even run the programs because of the significant changes that were necessary. So I tip my hat to that group. We had 222 campers enrolled. The number, which sounds great, is half of what we normally have as it relates to the requirements and the restrictions as it relates to different things that we had in place. We had, we had no COVID cases, by the way, and the, through, positive cases through all those campus programs throughout the summer with the option. We had one positive case in the Kids Cafe summer program, and certainly Dr. Koblinsky and Liz Curran can speak to that. So we had successful, safe programs here throughout the summer months, both in Freetown and Lakeville. Session one had 162 students, session two, 163 and 193. So we were able to, we did, by the way, require in Kids Cafe, because there was some complexity in relation to spacing and distance, we did require masks. That was the one program that indoors, they were required because of the challenges faced with the different types of activities that we're engaged in. And don't forget, we have many staff members that fell below eligibility and age as it relates to vaccination, so we felt it was the safe, prudent thing to do. I'm meeting with Ms. Pacico because obviously we need to address some of the situations that came up in the summer and kind of prepare. Hopefully, we'll be able to go back and expand. We're doing that with transportation, for example, and I'm confident that next summer we can kind of relive and rejuvenate the summer, the summer Kids Cafe program as it relates. I can certainly, Mrs. Fox, I can have both Dr. Koblinsky and Liz take a portion of their report, or we can wait till they give their entire report, and I'll leave that kind of up to your discretion, but I know the group wanted to do that, and we typically have brought those directors in in January, mid-winter to do that. If you want to move that up a little bit in relation to...
Well, I kind of do, because I did hear some problems, and I'm happy to say that you, you and Ms. Pacico are going to sit down and talk. It was mostly communication and coordination, so I'm sure it's stuff that can be rectified, but you know, you have 95-degree days and the pool isn't ready, that's a problem.
So we are, we are meeting to discuss some of the items as it relates to facilities, and I can certainly report back out or have Lisa report out as well.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be good. And I think given the situation and given, you know, work that we were doing in the buildings and everything, because quite a bit happened, and we'll be talking about that as well.
So what's pretty unbelievable in relation to Mrs. Fox's point is cranes, significant structures, a lot of districts would have passed on this community activity and said, you know what, the easiest thing to do is shut down and not engage. We actually did just the opposite, right? We really tried to create these programs and bring back some life to our schools and did so successfully, and we had to work around. For example, we retired, and I'm taking a little bit of, we retired all the classrooms at the intermediate schools necessary. So we did some real significant facility things, but obviously that impacts programs. So again, in full use of our facilities, but I do meet with the directors, Kara meets with the director of facilities as well, and we can have some updates for the committee moving forward as it relates. But overall, and I think Pat and Liz will speak to it, with their programs, high numbers, success, and I hopefully address some of the big picture piece we talked about, you know, we haven't really talked, touched upon social emotional learning and wellness and well-being, and Mr. Owen, I think, referenced it with his kids. Kids want to come back to school, and we were able to bring a lot of kids back on campus in a real normal setting. You see in the afternoon now, all our athletes, athletes are out there participating and practicing, so we've already begun that process, so...
No, and frankly, it was good for the parents, too.
Absolutely, yes. And again, the restrictions were more, things that were imposed as it relates to the numbers, not because we did it locally, but we had no choice. But overall, success, and Gene, I'll defer to you if you want Liz and Pat to give their summer updates now or wait till their reports.
Well, you know what, why not? Since we're in summer mode and it's 90 out. Who wants to go first?
I'll go. Okay. So we expanded our academic offerings this year in response to trying to accelerate learning and recapture some of what we found was lost. We had approximately 150 students attend. This year, we provided transportation for families who felt they needed it. needed it. It has not been, um, offered in the past. Usually, for summer school, it's the parent's responsibility to get the kids back and forth to the program. Um, we did have a few, um, who availed themselves of that, um, and, and I had support from Jen Seberg to help me get vans to provide the transportation for the kids. Um, I monitored the programs, showing up to see what was going on. Um, I would say half, maybe, were in masks, half were not. Um, the kids were all engaged. They seemed to enjoy the experience. Uh, the, the, um, the rooms were lodged, so they were, um, able to spread out. Um, at A, at AES, they used the gym to set up in all four corners for the four, uh, programs that were running. They had the doors open. They had fans blowing. The kids were thrilled, completely engaged, had a great time. Um, at the end, the, the students were given books at the end of each session, encouraged to continue with iReady reading. Um, I think it was a very successful program. Um, we had 15 teachers who volunteered to do this. Um, well, volunteered, um, and $30,000 in salaries for, um, for that program. So, we're tracking that, and Kara and I had a conversation about incorporating this type of a summer, a more robust summer experience academically for kids moving forward. Um, so her and I are tracking numbers so that we know what to put into grants and then eventually into budget, if the budget can support that.
Great. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, our extended school year serves students on IEPs who have, um, extended school time built into their, um, individual programs. Um, you'll notice that the number, I'm happy to report, when I did the final calculations, went up to 128. So, we had a, a very good showing. Students received, um, academics and related support services based on their IEPs. That could be speech and language, occupational therapy, physical therapy, and there was also the benefit of the pool for some of the, the programming, um, and, and ser- and related services. It was a very, um, I was onsite for the duration of the program. It was a lot of, um, smiling faces and a lot of really excellent engagement. There was, it, it was very just smooth, well-run, and, and everybody was upbeat, happy, and, and learning and, and having fun as well. It was, it was just bustling and happy.
So, she's really undervaluing her role.
You didn't say one of the PPEs.
When she says she was onsite, please explain.
Why?
Okay, so.
Your role.
Sure.
In addition to your oversight of the program.
Yes. So, um, our one contracted teacher, which I was very excited to get, had a, um, a medical emergency, um, a, a significant serious, and she was hospitalized for several weeks, not COVID-related. Um, and so I learned this about 15 minutes before the, the kids were coming in. So, I had a, um.
I had to step in?
I had.
Preschool.
Preschool, three and four-year-olds. And let me just tell you, it was, could not have been more wonderful. Um, it was, we, we learned and we, we had a lot of fun.
So, so to, to Liz's credit, she took on that role through the entire program for those kids and would come back and share some examples, and maybe looked a little fatigued some afternoons when I saw her there, but.
It was, yes, it was very warm. So, the, there's a very different, uh, actual in-person experience with that heat. So, we will certainly look to Mr. Goodwin for our portable units for next summer.
That's why we need to continue these discussions.
So, she was literally in the trenches this summer with these kids. So, I, I really appreciate, and, and certainly the program benefited from her, her health there as well.
Thank you.
Just a question.
Yes.
Um, so, it looks like our percentage of participation is similar to where we were three years ago. Um, is that typical? Were the reasons why for the not participants related to COVID, or are they?
No, it's, it's actually quite typical. And these, these are actually, I'd say, even in going back to the three years ago, that's a pretty high percentage of participants.
I'm happy to see that. The reasons why not were similar.
Vacations, unplugging from school. Um, we have some non-responders that, um, you know.
Great, thank you.
Don't participate.
That's a good question. Well, thank you for that. Um, oh.
We are back to the director.
Committee. So, we're back to Ms. Lee.
Okay, um, just a few items. Um, the first being our COVID expenditures, just an update. We presented a request to the town of Freetown on June 21st for additional CARES Act funding of $155,000, and it was granted. We have already received the reimbursements for the town, um, $81,000 to support remote learning for last spring, and $73,000 to support additional transportation and cleaning costs. We were also granted, um, from FEMA, an award of $21,564 to support PPE items from, for the opening of school for last school year. Overall, we were able to recoup nearly all of our COVID-related costs through various grant fund sources as presented on the COVID summary, leaving the district in an excellent financial position. And then for, um, ESER II, um, just an update here. Included in item AA is a summary of ESER II. The district, um, has been provided provisional approval of the grant of $960,000. Also included in your summary, um, are the budgeted uses. You will see that there are items that address learning loss, high-quality instructional materials, mental health, technology items, and facilities improvements for both Freetown Elementary and Assawamse Elementary. I retain the items for Freetown Elementary and Assawamse Elementary in the spirit of assisting the town's own school buildings that we are leasing, since they would be a great benefit to our students, even though technically, the entire ESER II grant of $960,703 can be used at the request or the discretion of the district. It is important to note that the budget can be amended if the committee so desires to redirect the funds back to the district-owned facilities. Each town in, in this scenario would receive a benefit to their buildings of about $200,000 per school. And just to summarize, we are extremely grateful that the towns had provided significant support to our district through the CARES Act funds for FY20 and FY21 by sharing their CARES Act resources with us, approximately $1,028,000 from Lakeville, Plymouth County, and $765,000 from Freetown. And I just wanted to, uh, mention some items about the MSBA statement of interest. The district has so far been identified as one of 29 districts that met the initial eligibility criteria out of an original 60 applications. Um, and this relates to Assawamse Elementary for windows, um, indoors. We had provided a virtual tour on August 5th and an in-person onsite tour August 12th. Additional information is included in your packet on the next steps. We have started working with the town and the MSBA on language, and the MSBA has provided historical estimates to help determine which type of funds would need to be appropriated for the schematic design phase. I believe the Lakeville Board of Selectment are considering a later fall town meeting in early November due to the October 27th MSBA vote, where it will be determined if Assawamse is a selected project.
So, we anticipate hearing potentially maybe something in September.
Yeah.
Unofficially by the September 22nd school committee meeting leading up to the formal vote in October.
And then updates to the train project are also included in your packet. It has been a productive summer. The district, even prior to the pandemic, had committed to making various HVAC and energy upgrades of approximately $6 million, where the project is currently about 95% complete. The HVAC components include unit ventilators, rooftop units, and chillers, all which allow the district to provide better airflow to our students in the building. Additionally, because the district recovered about $600,000 in 2021, that was deducted from our operating budget in 2020. We were then able to commit another $400,000 for this year towards various HVAC upgrades. Um, those upgrades, um, were committed, not yet completed, but hopefully in the fall, um, will, will be on the list to get those done. They will include exhaust fans at our main campus, the high school, the middle school, and, and the intermediate school. And then going back to ESER II, um, as it relates to unwinding the ESER II funds, it would reduce the operating budget expenditures from $42,474,449 to $41,826,58. It would reduce the operating budget of sources of available funds or revenues by removing the ESER II component of $648,391. The town of Freetown assessment would be amended from $12,338,41 to $12,371,111, which is an increase of $33,070. The town of Lakeville assessment would be amended from $15,758,683 to $15,725,613, which would be a decrease of $33,070. The reason for the shifting in the assessment is because the ESER II calculation originally required in the governor's original budget model differs from the calculation we utilize as a district to a portion cost based on enrollment by town. The committee, I believe, has a few options. The first being to credit the differences in the ESER II grant funding application, since we had applied to cover projects that relate to town-owned buildings, Freetown Elementary and Assawamse Elementary. The second option, to credit the differences through future assessments, for example, the FY23 budget process. We have not yet discussed these options with towns in detail beyond very early preliminary discussions. Um, I do believe we should vote to reduce our budget for the expenditures and revenue sources for ESER II to unwind those, and then possibly approach the towns to see which options they would like to proceed with.
Thank you. Mr. Owen?
Um, I guess we'll start backwards here. Um, so on the vote that you're proposing here.
Yes.
The front page talks about a total impact is, is $5.36, but your breakdown talks at about 33K.
Yes.
Can you just highlight the differences there?
I can. So, um, because I knew that there would be a difference in the assessment, when I applied for the actual ESER II grant, I credited more money to Lakeville through that grant already than Freetown. So, I've actually credited them already through the grant, which I could simply reverse through an amendment through the grant. Um, so essentially, I have provided the adjustment through the grant process.
So, the, the front page is more of the grant.
That's correct.
Secondary page is more for the assessment in this particular.
That's correct.
Okay. If we were to vote on this tonight, there's really no impact to the respective towns based upon this. You're asking that we have this discussion to see how we would do that in the future.
That's correct.
Okay. Um, so just to button up on this, I'll make a motion to, uh, to.
Reduce.
To offset the budget as presented.
Yes.
By that amount.
As presented, yeah, so.
Okay, that's a good motion. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Is there any further discussion on this? No. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so we've done that.
Sorry, just a point of clarification here. Because this is budget-related, does this need a three-fourth vote?
Um, I would say yes.
Okay, so can we just do a roll call vote, just for clarity?
No, that's my idea.
I think it was unanimous, but I just, because it is budget-related, I do believe we need three-four.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Good. Related to this, Ms. Lee, I would, my proposal is you continue to have your conversations with the town accountants as far as the different options.
Sure.
And then I would bring this up at a regional finance subcommittee to what is, and get their buy-in as far as what's the best option. It sounds like we have a few options before us, but let, I think that's probably the best venue to have that discussion with some preliminary work through yourself and the town accountants. But I'll open up to the rest of the committee if they have a different opinion.
Not at all. That's probably the appropriate way to go.
Okay.
That was my question, was how much, how far have we gotten with the towns, and we really haven't gone there. The purpose of it was to adjust.
Absolutely.
Mm-hmm, okay. So, to go through the rest of the questions, as far as the, the COVID summary that you talked about, I know there was a discrepancy that Lakeville was gonna hold back funds until Freetown. Does, based upon this, does this reconcile across the board?
It reconciles it to the penny, um, based on our FY21 assessment.
Okay. Um, thank you. That clarifies that. As far as the ESER II update is grant, is there a timeframe that, that needs to be?
Are you speaking of ESER III, ARPA?
ESER II.
ESER III.
I haven't got to ESER III yet. ESER II, based upon your grants and when we need to utilize these funds.
So, ESER II goes until September 2023.
Okay.
Um, and then I did wanna give an update to ARPA ESER III, so thank you for actually mentioning, um, ESER. Um, I just wanted to note that the district will now shift focus to a plan that addresses community outreach on the funding areas that Freetown, Lakeville Regional School District is considering, as well as a detailed use of the grant funds. The grant for ESER III, American Rescue Plan, will be for $2.2 million. Um, the current model that we are looking at, um, we're looking at a model that 45% will address learning loss and high-quality education, 15% towards PPE-related measures, 20% towards technology, 20% towards facility upgrades or environmental concerns. Um, and of course, that is subject to change. That's just our preliminary draft of the grant. The grant is due by mid-October. So, we would plan on the next school committee meeting to have any public comments available, um, in regards to, um, people's views on how the money should be spent.
It says October 4th.
October 14th, I believe.
Oh, it does say 4.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Then I would strongly suggest we do a, a regional finance subcommittee meeting before that, just so we can get that whole piece, and, and maybe that we have it bef- I don't know, based upon timing, before the full committee, so there was a recommendation from that. Just a suggestion, but we are in a tight timing there.
Sure. Ms. Darren?
I'm sorry. Just so I understand this completely. So, starting in September of 2022, we will start to begin to receive $2.2 million approximately. That will take us through 2024.
That's correct. And it can be spent all the way going back from March 2020.
And 45% of that is learning loss?
That's our current model, which could change based on public participation, stakeholder involvement.
15% on PPEs.
Correct.
20%, I missed that.
Towards Chromebooks, towards any Chromebooks that would be expiring, um, in those years that were coming up against through the grant.
And 20% on facility improvement and environment.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, oh, thanks. I'm sorry. I interrupted, Mr. Owen.
Nope, that's okay. Just going back to the budget item here. Um, the, in the ESER II grant piece, there's a wireless update, and we don't have to go into the full details here, but I'd like to see, at the last town meeting, we actually had a, a pretty intense budget item on there, where the towns approved a complete wireless update. Is there?
I believe there were a few access points that needed to be added to make it a full. And I'd have to consult with the IT director on that to get some clarification, but that's my understanding.
Okay.
That's the 18-5 you're talking about.
That wireless access, the 18-5.
Yeah.
Was part of our budget request. It were, it was specific items that the IT director had noted, um, that needed to be fulfilled.
Okay.
It was part of the FY21 budget.
21, right. Um, Ms. Darren?
Sorry, I'm trying to wrap my head around this. So, starting in September of 2022, we will receive the $2.2 million, or is it a little bit dished out until 2024?
So, we won't receive the funds. We'll receive approval, if you will. So, September 21, when we apply for the grant, October 21, we apply for the grant, we'll receive provisional approval. Then as we spend the funds, we can draw down the funds. And that, that funding can be drawn down, in this case, through September 2024.
Right.
So, it does bring us into FY25 partly.
Yeah, the only other thing I would just reiterate is, I, I'd like for us to be fed fast in these non-operational pieces. Can't get into a situation where we were a number of years ago. Um, and, uh, hopefully we continue that trend.
I'm in agreement.
And then my last piece on TRAN, we should put out a separate, call it marketing, what have you. This is a pretty extensive list of updates the district has made, um, with a lot of hard work from, you know, Ms. Lee's and the administration, at zero cost to the towns. And I think we need to put that out there, because it's a lot of work that's being done that is uncommon in any of the districts around here. And I do think that's an opportunity to let the stakeholders, the two towns, know all the work that has been done, not just through TRAN, but also through the extra work here. There was a period of time that we were not doing facility updates, and so we continue that trend. So, I think it, this calls for some sort of message out there, just to itemize this list of what has been done to each of our schools.
Yeah, if, we'd have to be careful how we do that, because it's a lot of detail, but I think you can push the high point.
So, TRAN is, is commonly done, like a PowerPoint summary.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and actually come and coordinate it with the director of finance and in school districts, and kind of gave some highlights with some photos to kind of capture, like you said, the big picture.
That's what I'm saying. It needs to be high-level, lots of white space. That's what I'm saying, it needs to be high-level, lots of white space, but it can be very impactful.
Yep.
In that it, it, the, the final message is what Ms. Owens said.
As we wrap up some of these projects, we certainly can do that.
Oh, it's incredible, yep, especially all the air stuff. Um, okay, um, any other questions? And your report is complete, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, anything else from you, Dr. Kobinski? We just did summer, we didn't do the rest.
I did summer school programs. Um, our M-CAS itemized scores have, um, been sent to the districts, I've done a preliminary analysis, like a gap analysis, just to look at our curriculum and, and where we're falling apart. These scores have been given to the principals, once the teachers are in, their data teams will dig into those to see how that affects their children and, and how they'll stop their intervention processes using that. Um, overall, our students performed better than the state average in comparing what they had sent to us, some grade significantly so, um, in particular, our grade ten at the high school. Um, so, basically, the, the performance was pretty high across the board, um, with some gaps that I want them to look at now as a, as a school community, and will start to come up with some plans for how to address those gaps. Um, Mrs. Lee talked about grants. One of the grants I just wanted to bring to attention was, um, we've been working on an early literacy grant. This is our third year for A E S, second year for F E S as part of this grant, and it addresses all components of reading skills for little ones as they begin to read, uh, moving forward. Last year, we already saw significant gains from this program and all of the consulting work, and all of the professional development that the teachers had received. Now, um, I met this morning with the Desi consultant and the two principals at A E S and F E S to, you know, plan out how the rest of this will move forward, and, um, it's, it's pretty exciting, um, what they're working on, and it's very exciting, um, being part of this global, it's, it's a statewide effort, but it's already showing us some great results. The teachers are very into it and, um, really grasped and got on board with what's going on, so started out with a pilot team in each school, and now it's growing out. So, um, there are quite a few teachers involved now, and now it'll be, um, it'll be developed across the board and actually become part of our embedded instruction now. And, and we'll have materials through this grant to support that work for the teachers. Um, and then, um, our title application, this year, A E S is once again, um, entitled to receiving title funds. Last year, they, they were not. So, A E S, F E S, and Grace will, um, obtain title funds, and our total is four hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. And again, having conversations with the principals about how we want that, um, money to be spent, um, to supplement services. We cannot supplant where with the S R grants, we can provide programs for everybody with the title money, and we have to be careful with, you know, how we do that. Um, but again, the focus will be on supporting our, um, our learners that need a boost and providing the resources and the interventions that teachers need, um, including maybe personnel that can support the intervention and working with, um, with the students, and that, again, would come under the title grant. Um, and I just wanted to share one more thing with you, um, we had met last week as an administrative team, and the technology department happened to report out, and I thought some of it might be interesting to, um, to the members of this, this body and, and for, um, our community. They've spent a lot of time this summer upgrading, um, both Craig and Ryan, our new technology person, um, upgrading our computers, increasing the memory, changing out the hard drives so that there's, um, more, um, capability there. Um, they have optimized our Windows ten operating system, they've also developed a robust data backup program, which I believe we did not have in the past, we had only in some places. Now it's pretty universal, um, so that we don't scramble and lose our data. Um, they are investigating a new student information system, there's a committee that is working on that, and they have also, um, really delved into technological security measures, um, keeping student data safe, um, better password protection for our Google workspaces, um, something that, we're now going to have to change passwords way more frequently than Superintendent Madeiras and some of us want to, but, but it's, it's, it's really good. It's, we, we need to tighten our security. Um, Mr. Mack, Mackamar and, uh, Mr. Blanchard are investigating all of that. That is supposed to start, I believe, September first. We have to have a new, some new, um, stuff in mind for that, for security. Um, some limited local control so that we can control what, what the students are able to use, what's coming into them. So, as we start to increase our use of technology in education, they are, we're, we're feeding, I'm feeding to them, you know, what I'm doing, what I need, and then they're researching and coming up with, okay, here's why we keep, how we keep all of this safe, here are the security measures that now need to be in place based on what's going on in classrooms. So that's going to be a lot more robust than it has been in the past, just based on all of our students using their one-to-one Chromebooks. So we were, we were pretty jazzed about what we had heard going on in the department, um, over the summer.
And, and that's just really just a highlight, I asked Pat to, to address that, obviously, Mr. Mackamar and the tech department will give an update as they typically do to present, but just, a lot has happened over the summer.
Right.
With that department's support of instruction and delivery of instruction, um, for both students and staff, we're excited about that, and they are as well. We've added some new staff members there, and so really have, I think, bolstered the team moving forward.
Yeah, and the collaboration, I think, between us, now that curriculum needs are changing and, and curriculum's changing based on technology, and now being able to talk to them to say, here's what's happening, how do we protect that, how do we protect everybody, how do I keep that going? So it's been, it's been a nice, um, collaboration.
I have to change my password all the time, you get used to it.
I guess.
Knee and the neck. Um, can I ask just one question? I, I'm just, thank you for the update on M-CAS, too. I, I'd be really interested, and I think this entire committee would, to see where those gaps happened, um, and, and just how profound they were.
Right.
If they were.
Yes.
Um, glad about the tenth grade, but we, we're, you know, we totally changed how we do M-CAS. We had a tough year for it to have to happen.
Right.
And, and following a, a prolonged period of difficulty, um, despite everyone's best efforts. I just, I, I am curious about where those gaps are.
Sure.
And I look forward to hearing more about that.
Yep.
And I am happy about the technology. That's good, because I know, there are many people on this board and are staring at Mrs. Darren, who's been very clear.
I meant the gaps.
And the gaps, yeah, okay. Um, but I know that, you know, we were very concerned about, that we've got burgeoning technology, it's everywhere, and it's tough to keep up, so that's, that's.
Right, yeah, so we're trying to stay on top of that.
Mm-hmm.
And for that reason.
Any other, yes, Ms. Owens?
Um, it, it, with the S R two grant, uh, is there any plan for those funds? As we talk about technology, these new students and, and learning how to use the Chromebooks as it applies to the curriculum.
Mm-hmm.
I know we're adding new curriculum at the middle school, but how do we get these younger kids to continue in education around these and the proper use of that?
So our professional development this year is based on how to incorporate technology into instruction and how to teach the children how to use that technology. Um, we're working again with EdTech Teacher and the Highlander Institute as partners in, one, the pedagogy around, how do you now create lessons that incorporate technology into instruction, and then how do you use the programs? What are we doing with that? And then, um, getting people on board with, now teaching all of that to, to the kids, who picking up, picking it up way faster than we are.
Great.
It's so intuitive to them.
Good, good to hear, good to hear. Um, can you elaborate a little bit on the new reading program for K to six?
So the new reading program, we have a committee, um, that will begin reviewing the materials in the fall. We will not have access to this money until, as Mrs. Lee indicated, until further on in the school year, so that gives us time to look at some programs, this committee, that I, you know, that, not your committee, uh, my committee that we've created, um, vet some programs, have some opportunity to pilot them, bring in the people who, um, represent these programs, and then collectively make a decision on which program we want to purchase. Right now, we're looking at K to six, but in speaking to Mr. Higgins, we'd like to look at a program that also has the capacity to expand to seven and eight, if that becomes something that's necessary. At this point, he does not feel seven and eight needs that, they've done a lot of work creating their own curriculum. Um, so, so that, that presentation, I'm sure, will come before this board, uh, before we actually.
So we're just, the, the initial work is starting in that, okay.
Yes, and, and the other thing is that those materials have to be vetted by, there's an organization called Ed Reports, and then they, they, um, address the standards and how well, you know, components of the program hit each standard, and they rate them. And then there's another organization, um, that Massachusetts uses religiously and called Curate. So I'm trying to make sure that what we're looking at, um, is approved by both of those bodies, and then bring that out to the committee, so they're not inundated with material that will pick maybe four programs that look really promising, and let's look at those and see if they match what we need. Again, looking at the M-CAS gap analysis, are they meeting what we need here, um, for our kids? So, so, you know, there's a lot of things going on right now that will culminate, um, together, that the, um, community will, you know, that, that committee will work on.
Um, and, and last question, um, in, in June, an outside agency presented to us feedback from a student survey.
Mm-hmm.
It was asked for feedback on how that applied to the policy that we have in place in the district. Do you have a response to that as of yet?
Yes, I did speak to the principals who gave the survey, they said that the policy was followed. We also met with the admin team on Thursday of last week, presented the policy to them, and asked them to make sure that it was, um, shared with families, because that was one of the components I noticed in the, in the survey, that annually, parents need to be made aware, so.
So just to be clear, we outreach to parents prior to giving the survey?
That's what they told me, yes.
And, and what grade levels was this presented to?
Grade three.
I'm sorry?
Grade three. Grade three, three.
Three to eight.
Grade, no, just grade three, and then they were focus groups for grades three, four, and five.
Okay.
It wasn't grade, it wasn't middle school, it was the elementary. It was grades three, four, and five.
Okay.
Can you refresh my memory on what that survey was pertaining to?
So, the social emotional well-being of our students last year, how were they feeling, being back in school, wearing masks, um.
Thank you. Anything else for Dr. Kobinski? Ms. Curling?
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So part of our planning for the next school year is to complete staffing. Uh, we currently have, uh, an open school psychologist position, due to a resignation, um, in, in occupational therapist need due to a, a medical leave. Uh, we, we have, we did post for the position, we received a very small amount of licensed candidates, uh, and we did have, um, an unsuccessful round of, of interviews. We, um, are currently gonna, most likely starting the school year with, um, our elementary school psychologist, and we have three contracted, uh, school psychologists from, um, last year. So we have a, a capable bunch while we continue to, uh, repost, uh, and also, uh, seeking, um, I've made outreach to some agencies for contractual help as well. So, we thought that we would, um, you know, be looking at a, a potential to do, um, a, an additional school psychologist, and, and we're, um, probably going to con, uh, contract to fulfill those needs at least at this time, until, um, we can identify a, a good candidate that's gonna, um, be best for the, the district and our, our needs. Um, we are also, in conjunction with building principles, working to finalize, uh, paraprofessional assignments and student assignments for paraprofessionals at all levels. In, in terms of a final staffing piece, in, in terms of our special ed structure, um, Meredith Foy is, uh, back full-time, uh, and she's going to be covering A E S and F E S, the elementary level, and also the, the pre-K, obviously, at F E S, F E S. Um, Ashley Boulay is going to cover the middle school, excuse me, Grace and the middle school, and I am going to cover the high school, in addition to the out-of-districts. Uh, regarding transportation, all of our in-district special ed transportation routes have been completed. Uh, we are working to finalize our out-of-district routes. We, uh, recently learned that, um, our current provider cannot meet our, uh, needs at this time, so we're looking to supplement that. We had been, uh, periodically as well, so, um, that was already in the works, so, uh, it looks like we will be able to, to cover, um, all of our needs for the first day of school. Doing a little, little juggling, um, but it is, um, it looks like that will, will, uh, go off without a hitch. Desi, grants through, uh, the grant money for, uh, through the end of, um, well, it, it runs through the summer, the, uh, I D E A and early childhood supplemental grants, we're able to order, um, a, a good amount of educational and supportive materials for, um, our program, uh, teachers and students, and also our pre-K under early childhood. I know that, um, we were in communication with those folks, um, throughout the summer to, um, to make those final purchases on the grants. The new fiscal year twenty-two grant applications have just been released, so we, um, are going to be working in the next, um, couple of weeks to complete those, those are due October fourth. Uh, family engagement and, uh, CPAC, we actually had a planning meeting, not an official business meeting, but a planning meeting on Monday of this week, um, to discuss the elections and the plans for the upcoming year. The, um, election, uh, and first business meeting will be held on October sixth, at six-thirty. Uh, we, that will also include the election and the annual parents' rights in special education presentation. Um, they wanted to gauge, um, in, in terms of meeting dates and time, so we're going to do a little more work together on setting forth a schedule that might, um, you know, be more attractive to families to be able to participate, uh, more, spend the same group of, um, dedicated staff, uh, excuse me, dedicated, um, parents who voluntarily staff the organization, and, um, I know they would like, um, some, you know, no new parent participation, um, if possible. Uh, finally, with the parent piece, uh, we are supporting CPAC by sponsoring them for this year, um, through one of our grants, um, as members of the Federation for Children with Special Needs, that provides them some resource, resource opportunities, as well as, um, different speakers that they can access, you know, through them, in supplement to what, um, we hope to do together this year.
Good.
And lastly, I have, um, updated our out-of-district enrollment census.
How many out-of-districts do we have? Is that a big number now?
Uh, no, uh, um, I should know, I believe it, uh, thirty-four.
It's okay.
Yeah. Yeah, when I.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
We've, you know, through, um, you know, working with families and, um, in our local collaboratives, we've really, um, you know, managed that quite well, it's really, um.
Yeah, going the right way.
Yeah, we're doing a, a lot with students, you know, in districts.
Thank you. Another question?
Yeah.
I, I know this committee over the last number of years has gone back and forth about transportation, owning the van versus outsourcing the routes type thing. Um, assuming we're continuing that analysis, because, you know, I know in-town versus out-of-town, what have you, I know, as I said a few years ago, it's more cost-effective to outsource it, I suspect that has changed if we're purchasing new vans and stuff like that, correct?
Yeah, yes, and you do, we, we are constantly looking at this, um, you know, we're, we're also looking at, you know, other, you know, vendors, too, to be able to, to meet all of our needs. Um, and, and just coincidentally, I don't know if you've heard it or elsewhere, uh, on the news or, um, you know, through your work or community, there's a shortage of, um, there was a shortage before, um, COVID, but there is really, you know, a hard hit with, um, drivers.
Drivers, yeah.
As well as, uh, van resources. In addition to schools. -as well as van resources, in addition to school psychologists. I, you know, get blurbs from agencies about national shortage of school psychologists and so.
Four thousand dollar bonuses without the bricks for Buster.
The committee should know that Director of Finance is working closely with this, too, in relation to looking at the the options as well for in-district and out-of-district and vendors and so forth. And and maybe you might even accelerate that even more so than it's been reviewed in the last couple of years.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. So Subcommittee update, Regional Spend Commune, you already discussed. You want to set that up before the next meeting, correct, if possible?
That may be a little aggressive, Steve. We can talk, we can talk offline about that, but sometime in September, October.
Be nice, but okay.
It's always been challenging trying to get a meeting together with the group-
I know.
-before the budget season, but I do think that we kick off some of the initial discussions.
There's a lot to talk about, so that makes sense. Superintendent Zavala?
I do have a superintendent item, but I'm going to wait till other at the tail end of the meeting, if that's okay?
Oh, okay. That's fine. Um, okay, thank you. Wellness, anything?
I don't have an update for you. I had said at the June meeting that the nurses would be forwarding to us the grant information, the $30,000. I have not followed up with them mainly because it's a summer vacation. However, I expect that the next meeting I'll be able to get that for you.
We typically kick off a meeting in October. I can tell you, the nurses have been very much engaged over the summer in getting ready for all the testing and things that were happening. So so we certainly will include Mrs. Barron and probably have an October meeting where she can then report back to the committee.
I did want to put one more thing on that plate this summer. No, that's a good point. Policy, we have?
We do have two policy requests. We haven't met as a subcommittee, but these are very minor changes that need to be addressed based on a state report, and maybe I can refer to Pat Koblinsky in relation to coordinated program review recommendations, and they're minor. So it would be my recommendation that we support these changes. If, Pat, you can just give those highlights.
Right. It's just a language, a few of them changing a word from differences to disability.
Again, these were pointed out by the state as required as part of these policies, so it's my recommendation to accept them as presented.
Right. And then, once that's approved, if it's okay, then I have to upload that into the state system to make sure that we actually complied with the changes.
All right.
So we can make the adjustments to address the state, but we need the committees-
So here's a question that needs to be compliant by?
Yes, September, I have to upload by September 30th. So if it was something you wanted to discuss tonight and then act on at the next school committee meeting-
We'd still follow in that time.
I would still have time.
So I'd like to propose we do that, because the policy states that there's a first reading, a second reading, a vote.
Exactly. Yes. So I did let them know that this would be technically the first reading. September 25th would be the second, and that was why they gave us the September 30th date. So I had five days after that to to upload.
Ms. Sanquist?
Are we finished on this on this topic, or?
Yeah, he was just asking about the date.
Oh, cool. So I mean, I think through the chair, I'd like to request that we add the Free Town Vocational Subcommittee to this list.
Oh, my God, yeah.
Mr. Superintendent, not to put you on the spot right now, certainly not for this meeting, but if you could provide us with updates there, that would be great.
Good point.
Would you like me to comment at this point in relation to that, or do you want to?
If you have some to share.
Do you have information?
Yeah, so, um, no pressure. Both, no, both Ms. Sanquist specifically and Mrs. Fox and and the other Free Town reps have been very aggressive to be sure that we provide vocational opportunity for both towns, right? And and we had an issue at least one year, not anything that we controlled relative to Free Town. We've addressed that issue, and moving forward, we're very excited that we now only have a partnership with Old Colony for our students to continue our juniors and seniors at Free Town and all Lakeville students. Bristol Aggie remains a very viable option, but now we have added Bristol Plymouth based on this subcommittee work that Will's referencing. And we do have, in fact, I believe, Mrs. Roderick, I know it's changing slightly, 14 students, I think, right now that are accepted and approved. We had 15 students, but then we had some issues in relation to the number.
I remembered 15.
So 15 was the slot, but we actually had some family changes, so one left and another has come through. But the bottom line, to Mr. Sanquist's point, we have we have absolutely engaged and provided an opportunity for our eighth-grade students going into ninth grade at Free Town. Not only not only are we providing the vocational, but we're providing the transportation as required, too. So we're making sure that that's taking place for all those kids, which is a pretty complicated piece. So you can imagine, over the last two to three weeks, we have the Bristol Aggie group for both communities, we have the Old Colony group, and we have the Bristol Plymouth now students. And to Mr. Sanquist's point, we are pursuing potential membership with Bristol Plymouth, and we met with the superintendent of Bristol Plymouth in relation to securing additional slots for future Free Town students. So we're pretty excited about that, but it is up and running. And so hopefully, we never repeat that one-year lapse where those students didn't have that opportunity.
So, sorry, just to, so are we, or is Free, because I know it's at the town level, so is Free Town a member now of Bristol Plymouth?
So they are beginning the process, but they are not currently a member. So these students were accepted as non-resident members, and that was the agreement for one year, as we pursue membership, which involves all the towns.
All the towns, that's right.
And that's currently the process that Mr. Sanquist is referencing, and he's been part of.
I just ask that that we just stay, just keep us abreast of the timeline, all right? I just want to make sure we're dotting all our i's and crossing all our t's.
I can speak to that, because I was a little concerned about that. For those of us who know, certainly in the town of Free Town, there's been some 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 changes in relation to officials and and positions, and I was very much concerned. I met as superintendent with the superintendent and business manager and included Ms. Lee's in the conversation with Bristol Plymouth, just to ensure, to Will's point, that that we're not we're not sitting here in December and January and someone's saying, we really need to get started earlier on that. So I've been pretty aggressive, and I've included the Free Town residents. It is my intent that we should hopefully be able to bring something forward, and we would accomplish membership by the end of this year or the following year. Absolutely.
Yep, great.
It's a good topic to add to that list, though, because this allows us to make sure we have the venue to do that.
Correct. All right. Other business that may properly come before the meeting?
I do, through the chair, somewhat brief. I know you have seen it in person, but I think for the community at large, it's important for me to note, because I think it's important for the public to hear, I am, dear school committee members, I'm notifying you of my intent to retire effective June 30, 2022. After 35 years in public education, the past eight years as superintendent of the Free Town Lakeville Regional School District, I'll be retiring to start the next chapter of my career and personal life. I'm making this announcement early this year so that the board has ample time to find a suitable replacement. As a result, I hope to help the superintendent make a smooth transition. I'd like to thank you for your support these past eight years, as we truly have raised the bar for our children in both towns. I've had the fortune of working with many talented individuals in the district and do feel we have made a true difference. My work's not done here. Notice I said June 2022, and I look forward to working together as bringing back some normalcy to our educational experience, as we talked about this earlier, this evening, this coming school year. I want to once again publicly thank the school committee members for giving me the opportunity to serve both communities and for supporting my decisions during this administration. This school community is truly student-centered, and I do believe we are a better place to see future success for all our children. I do hope my legacy is that I leave the school community as a stronger organization than when I arrived. Thank you to all the stakeholders that believed in me and helped support in success. So I know it seems well in advance, but as many of the board members know here, the process has to start, and certainly that will start with the community at large real soon, and that's why I wanted to be sure that we did this publicly tonight. So thank you, Mrs. Fox, Mrs. Owens, for allowing me the opportunity to read the letter.
Yes, thank you very much for that. Any comments or questions? It was a very nicely written letter. All right, is there anything else?
Mr. Madeiras, I know you and I had a conversation, just to quantify, just for the public to hear. Last year, there was no middle school sports. Middle school sports are going on as we speak.
100% correct. That is correct.
I'm glad you brought that up. All right, that's it. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.